Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the September 27th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. I can't believe it's almost the end of September. Our thought for the day is Proverbs 24 verses 5 and 6. "The wise are mightier than the strong, and those with knowledge grow stronger and stronger. So don't go to war without wise guidance; victory depends on having many advisors." And our dog warden has our dog from the kennel this morning. We can't find our handheld mic, so he's going to be over here to talk about.
Okay, this is kennel number 12. Female, American Bulldog mix. Seems very friendly. We have 31 dogs there, and she's available for adoption tomorrow.
Thank you. It's like Petey from The Little Rascals, but it's a girl, so we're going to call her Miss Petey.
Yeah, her Phantom of the Opera.
She's very happy to be here.
Phantom of the Opera.
Oh, there you go. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Under appointments, we have Keith Bailey regards to the Swann Excellence Award.
Keith, come on up.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
Bring you greetings. A little bit about your collection center that you've managed for seven years. Many people come through this facility, not just our residents. We've had over 20, some other districts and people from other states visit this facility.
Thank you.
It's become the renowned facility to visit and mock themselves after. Lucas County, who recently just started their collection program, was over and looked at this one just this summer. So we're kind of the example that everybody's using now, all right?
Good.
Give you a little bit of history on the facility. We do want to thank the mayor of Elaria for providing us this video.
Volume.
It's just music.
Does there sound now?
It's just music playing, but I can't hear it.
There's no commentary.
No, just music.
Shows you a little bit of the visual of the inside. This is where we've gone since we opened the facility in June 19, 2010. We've gone up to 15,000 vehicles when we ended in 2016. You can see we had a steady growth of this going upward with the number of vehicles we're servicing. Some of the smaller programs that we have at the center, rechargeable batteries, you see we did 9,000 pounds in 2016 and the 79,000 was done. We started books and paper in 2012 and hardback books, which is a very hard to recycle item. And you see last year was 115,000 pounds of books and cardboard and paper. Cardboard recycling is the next one. We started the first year, we got the baler from the O'Wies warehouse and moved it to our facility, and we've been baling cardboard ever since. Little bit about printer cartridges and cell phones. Cell phones we still send to a recycler, but there's no money in them. Department of Education used to do this on for us. And now we're sending our cartridges off to Greenway where they're recycled in Indianapolis, Indiana. And they do 97,000 this year, so to give you an idea, the volume they run. Motor oil, we'll continue to collect them and we'll continue to ship them, all right? Motor oil is something we got into late in 2012. First, we didn't take it. And motor oil is one of these things that's gone the gamut. We've been paid for motor oil. We pay for motor oil right now. Everything hinges on oil prices overseas, all right, and the oil market. So right now, we're paying to get rid of oil, though. We've done 2,000 gallons in '16. Vegetable oil is something we got into a few years ago. People wanted someplace to go with their turkey oil at Thanksgiving time. So we got into that market, and we still sell that material. So we're moving vegetable oil. Did 1,400 gallons in the last two years. Other small programs, scrap metals is a derivative of the operation. We're going to get scrap metal, whether you like it or not, mix in with electronics and those kind of things. So we did 7,200 pounds last year. Herb side recycling, when they closed the drop-off at Republic a few years ago, we were able to step in, provide that service. They drive through the center, our guys check the material and make sure it's clean, so Republic gets clean material on that big hopper outside, all right? Anna Freeze Collection is something we started in '15, and I've already shipped more than 300 gallons this year. So it's becoming a very popular program. Ballb and ballast. We've been doing ballb and ballast since before the center was built. And it's a monstrous program from the perspective, these things don't weigh all that much, all right? And you've got all this ball to handle, and you get all these eight footers. And this is one of the items we take from businesses like electronics, all right? And so we're looking at 98,000 balls. You can see that the volumes have varied, all right? And that's based on the rebate that we get, that the customers are getting from the electric company. So when rebates come out, our volume goes up, all right? East scrap collection, by far our largest item. Last year, we dedicated a third dock, and we do now a drop and swap, all right? And you can see that we've received back a little over $10,000 this year in revenue from electronics. It used to be a cost to us. Moving on, HHW is still the big, big item, all right? One of the things I want to bring your attention to, down to total, 310,000 pounds for has waste last year. Recently, Ronkey had a truck fire in Cuyahoga County. Cuyahoga County said, "We recycled 42,000 pounds of paint and has waste last year." You can see they're not even scratching the surface, all right? We did 310,000 pounds. One of the things that came out of this stream and why it dropped in '15 is the next program we're going to talk about. Latex paint. We started pulling our latex paint out of the system and remixing it and making Ego Blend Paint. I think Laura, you had a chip start?
I do. They have some really cool colors.
Yeah.
And they sell it at the restore.
At the restore.
Mm-hmm.
$14 a gallon and $56 a five gallon bucket is what it's selling for right now.
How much is it?
14 a gallon and 56 for five gallon. All right? So it's reblend and paint, and they're out of Banwood, Ohio. It's a good group to work with. And last big item is tires. It never goes away. We were handling about 35,000 tires a year at our three locations, to give you an idea. So a lot of tires moving around. Your costs, since you beginning, you've handled 13 million pounds of material in seven years. A million, 750,000 cost to get it processed and recycled, all right? And then $566,000 in labor, all right? And this is all variable cost. That's about 17 cents a pound. Comparing this to when we did the, remember the long line events a few years ago? In those particular days, you were doing 33 cents a pound. So you've cut your costs extremely. Cost contained operation. One of the things we received yesterday, it's not here yet, was presented in Baltimore, Maryland. We received the Excellence Award from Solid Waste Management Association of America. It's a national organization. It's actually Canadian and U.S. Every province has a chapter in Canada. 9,000 member group awarded you bronze level for your special weight center. This is the second time you've received that award. Any questions?
No, I just want to say from personal experience, got married over a year ago, had to clear stuff out of my then fiance's house when that was sold, and had to clear stuff recently out of my father's garage and stuff I accumulated in my own garage when I moved out of my house into my new house. And it's just amazing, folks. I mean, it just is alarming to me how some folks want to just throw stuff in a field or pour it someplace where it shouldn't be poured, when all you got to do is put it in the back of the truck, pull in. Your staff has always been professional. Pull it out of the truck, they do the sorting, you pull away, and everybody's happy, especially the environment. So it's just a great operation, and yeah, this is something we should share with as many counties as possible because we certainly have a very effective model here. And it's good to know we're being recognized nationally and internationally, I guess, too, since Canada's involved. But just a great job and a good staff, and it's good to see we're keeping the, you know, the costs down, too.
Yep. Guys do great work.
Well deserved.
I'll give this little paint chip thing to Hal so he can put it on the screen for, it's really nice colors actually picked from there, so.
Keith, give that presentation to Sandy so we can post it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Do you want to move on to visit Lorraine County?
Yes.
All right. Jen?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
I am here to talk about the Burger Battle. As you know, in the spring, we launched Restaurant Week with great success. So the Burger Battle is a counterpart here to Restaurant Week. Oh, come on. There we go. The Burger Battle is the counterpart here to Restaurant Week. What we're trying to do is highlight casual eateries. As we know, when people are looking to come to Lorraine County to bring overnight guests to Lorraine County, one of the first places they ask is, "Yes, is there anywhere great to eat?" So in the spring, we spent some time highlighting fine dining. Now Burger Battle is a fun, kind of cutesy, if I can use the word cutesy, spin on a more casual eating. So we have, oh, all the formatting is off here. We have 12 restaurants that are participating in the Burger Battle. What we're doing is we're actually offering a crown or a trophy for the best burger, overall best burger, and also then we're going to be highlighting the most creative, because a lot of our restaurants have gotten really, really creative. All of the burgers in the Burger Battle are offered at $12. Like I said, during the 10-day period of October 20th to October 29th, what we're doing is inviting people to come into one of the 12 participating restaurants, grab a burger, a $9 burger, and then they get to vote. There's a couple different ways to vote, which I'll walk through. Here is a list of the participating restaurants. We've got, we tried to hit all of the different geographic areas here in Lorraine County. Avon Brewing Company, Bistro 83, Brew Kettle and Amherst, Coles, Public House, The Foundry, The Fev, Hex, Jackalope's, Parkers, The Unicorn, Treehouse Gallery, and Your Pit. And I'll go through them a little bit.
You said $9 and you said $12, so.
I'm sorry. $9. $9 for the burger.
Okay.
Just the burger. Some of the places do add fries, which is, you know, the typical upcharge of a dollar or so. But yes, I'm sorry that I made a mistake there.
Okay.
The programming must have thrown me off. But yes, $9 for the burger during Restaurant Week. And this is a burger that you cannot get on the regular menu. This is something the chefs put some time into preparing, so it's something that's really unique, and it's what they feel is their best foot forward to be able to compete for the title. Here, I actually just kind of ran through, I'm not going to read all of them, but you're going to see all the different offerings. And they came up with some really cute ideas and really cute titles, looking for that creative prize as well. But we've got them with pulled pork. The Roundabout Burger is there at Bistro 83 in North Ridgeville, excuse me, and we know what's going on with construction.
The new Roundabout, yeah.
Yep, right in front. So I thought that was really clever. We've got Coles there with the Red Dragon, and that's with that Red Dragon cheddar cheese. The Fev with a mushroom brie burger. The Foundry, which has some bacon, it's actually a bacon and beef burger with jalapenos, with anything with jalapenos is my fave. I loved Hex's idea there with Getting Piggy With It. It was a really clever title. You know, Jackalope's is actually not necessarily topping their burger, but they're stuffing it. So they're stuffing it with gouda. And then the Parkers is taking their turn on an old classic. The Brew Kettle also stood out as something that was a little clever. They actually kind of made like a breakfast burger there with French toast. And then the Treehouse Gallery and Tea Room actually is making a crab meat burger. So The Unicorn is taking an Oscar burger, and Your Pit is actually working with Miller's Apple Orchard and making a barbecue apple burger. So we've got some really creative burgers that are a really great value for $9, but additionally, these places are really serious. When I talked to all of the restaurants, every single chef came out and met with me and said, "I'm in, and we're going to win." So they've got a little bit of a competitive flair, so it's been really fun to watch it all unfold. Like I said, the way it's going to work is people are going to, when they come into the restaurant and order their burger, they're going to get a ballot, which is also doubles it as a placemat, and it will have a little map and an opportunity for them to vote in person. Additionally, we are making it easy. They can vote online as well. They have to try at least one burger to vote, and of course, we'll capture their name and their email at that time. If they vote in person, they can turn that ballot in to the visitor's center. They can snap a picture with their phone and email it in to us, or they can mail it in. And we're going to choose one voter to win dinner for six at the restaurant that wins the crown, the title.
Question for you, Jen, is there a ability to tweet a photo to visit Lorraine County?
Yep, I'm sure there is. Yes, absolutely, we can do that. We can set up a hashtag and, you know, they can, absolutely, yeah. So we're pretty flexible in any way they want to get the ballot out. But here's the thing, we do need to capture their name and their email address and their zip code, just to make sure that we get one vote. One vote per person. And November 3rd is the date that we're trying to get all the votes in. How we are spreading the word, we are doing digital display advertising. So again, if you're on your computer and you see those advertisements come up, and you'll see a sample next. We're also doing social media, which is Facebook and Instagram. We have 15-second commercials running on WOIO CBS 19. And then we're also doing commercials on local radio, WOBL and WEOL. We have a live appearances scheduled on New Day Cleveland. We have a Q104 Morning Show appearance as well. Of course, we're doing social media posts, and we're asking every participating restaurant to really ramp up their social media during this time. And we have created a specific landing page again, which is just for the Burger Battle, which is visitlorranecounty-burgerbattle. And what that does is it talks about all the participating restaurants. It gives their menu or their burger, and it links to their webpage. Tells all of the fine print. So it kind of goes through the rules of the contest, how to vote, where to submit. So that is the single biggest resource. It's also going to be available and live on our webpage, but all of the advertisements are all directing right to that landing page, so then we can do what I love to do is count. And of course, we're going to be reaching out to the local media. All the restaurants are being provided with their own kit, which includes window cling, a digital font treatment, entries, scripts, directions, questions and answers for their staff, official entry cards. My goal is to make it really easy for them to participate and to take the excuses away. You can just see this example of some of the digital display ads. These are the things, if you're looking at your web browser, mobile, or computer, you're going to see pop up, these are all kind of the same variation, just different sizes, made with, I made folks send me a picture of their actual burger, made with our actual burgers. And here's just a example of one of the Facebook ads that's going to be running, so you can kind of see, and you'll be able to recognize it easily when it pops up on your screen. Anything I forgot to mention, any questions I can answer?
Oh, wonderful, great. Like the casual food, love the burgers.
Great, it's going to be really fun.
Kind of neat about this cupcake crawl, too, sort of reminds me of Commissioner Blair, eat dessert first, so this starts the 1st of October, you can have your entree the 20th of October.
The, you know, before somebody comes out and says, I don't expect a lot of people to cross the border this time for the Burger Brawl, but we don't start somewhere. Now, foodies don't know boundaries. You know, arts in the foods bring people in, and then the spending starts. So we have to start these events, and we have to get a lot of headway in them, and then they'll get bigger and bigger. So the Business Bureau needs to ignite this flame, and then hopefully it'll take off by the second or third annual event if we're successful with the first one. So we need our folks here in Lorraine County to really support this initiative so that we can push the boundaries. I know people travel into Cleveland all the time for Restaurant Week and Barbecue Week, and we're going to start having those things here and start bringing people to Lorraine County to do these things. We have a lot of fine places to dine, and we have a lot of fine casual eateries here, and we need to, first of all, stop the outflight of our expendable dollars and start bringing in expendable dollars. And that's what our goal is, and that's how you build a little bit of that tourism. You were in New York with me when Standard Empires asked us, "What's the identity of Lorraine County?" We struggled with it a little bit, but we tried to explain what we were trying to do because we're in between two major destinations, and we wanted to be more than a gas stop. But it was unique that they asked that question, wasn't it?
They did. They want to know what we are and who we are and what we felt our identity was. You're talking about reading presentations and...
So, and they weren't talking about government, they were talking about Lorraine County, so, okay.
It's for the cupcakes.
I was just going to mention, if I could, on the Burger Battle, could you go back a slide or two?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm sorry, to the social media ad.
Sure.
Okay. I was just going to say, we're going to drop in the Burger Battle logo in there.
It already actually has been dropped in on that one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just thought that was missing. And I know the component during Restaurant Week was the orientation with the waitstaff to make sure that they were bringing it to people's attention, to make sure that they were getting their voting card. So we learned a lesson from the first time around and...
We have. I have been working really hard to communicate with my frontline person at the restaurants. I have actually offered to go to every restaurant's queue time or tea time or whatever they call it, to talk to the staff on various days to make sure. I anticipate even with the Q and As and everything that that still is going to be a hurdle. But I've been working really hard to make sure. And like I said, I actually kind of have been doing pop-ins so that I can see the day shift manager and the evening shift manager, because I know that often they're all the funnel point.
But this one, they get a title. The last one, they didn't get a title.
Absolutely.
So I think there's going to be a little more competition. The last time, we didn't really want to say which was the best dining. You know, we sponsor a lot with the Best of Lorraine County, let the people that go there vote and do that. This one's going to be a little bit more exciting. I think there's going to be a lot more competition to, you know, to be the one that gets the title, at least the first round, the inaugural round. So I think you're going to see a little more emphasis on the server and the cell. It would have been easy just not to do that, but I think we need to create that competition. I wouldn't do that in the fine dining, but with the burger, I think we needed to do that.
Four burgers, 10 days.
Yep.
I thought we should give an award, though, for the person who goes to the most establishments and eats the most burgers in 10 days. I really do. And if we got a tie, maybe we can have, we can add that as a side award. Whoever eats the most burgers in 10 days, and again, if everybody, a bunch of people eat all 12, we'll do a drawing, and I think we should do something. I mean, I'd love to see somebody eat, you know, 12 burgers in 10 days and report back with all those pictures. We'll sponsor them, we'll post them.
I can definitely work to get a prize going for that.
Yeah, I really think that would be like another one of, you know, the people that go to Olive Garden and they eat like 300 pounds of pasta in that 20-day window to get their $100 worth of pasta. Can we look at something like that?
We got it, I got it. Yep, absolutely.
Love the logo with the two swords, very creative.
Thanks, thank you, thanks. I will say, though, to add on to what you were saying, Restaurant Week gave us a little bit of a base. So this year, when I was able to approach the restaurants, they kind of said, "Oh, yes, we want in, we've been wanting to do that." So I think the buy-in from that point is a little bit bigger, too.
Well, how many times, who you tell me the hardest people in the world to work with? How many times you tell me this? Come on, what do you tell me?
Yes, yes, I have to say, I love the restaurant people, but it sometimes is a challenge. They wear so many hats.
They don't call me back. They're busy.
Yeah, they're busy cooking. They are, they're busy, they're busy, you know, they're running all aspects of the house, and we know that. But sometimes you do have to do a little chasing, a little stalking, but that's okay. We got it, it worked.
Kevin, have any charges pressing?
Not yet, but I think it's been a few close calls. I'm actually going to introduce Amanda here to speak about the Cupcake Crawl. As you know, Amanda is the Marketing and Sales Coordinator, and Amanda has, this was Amanda's idea, I think, built out of passion for her own love of cupcakes. And she has done a really great job building this out, and I'm really proud to see how it's unfolded.
Thank you. Hi, Amanda.
Hi, Amanda. Hi, good morning. I'm a little tall for this, I guess.
You're good.
So in the spirit of the Cupcake Crawl, we brought you cupcakes, so I'll bring those up to you first.
You're my favorite.
Uh, no, Ted.
Coffee refilled.
No, Ted.
I'll start over here.
We'll be giving them insulin.
That's all right.
Jen, what's happening to your burgers? I mean, they could do a burger.
Yeah, where's the burger sale?
How about I bring the winter burgers?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we'll take them.
We'll take them into it.
Yeah, we'll eat those a little later.
Thank you.
Yeah, remember to take those to the radio and TV stations, and they always want food.
Oh, we did, when we went to Q104 yesterday morning, we did take them cupcakes as well. So they were thankful for that. They also taught us a neat new trick. You pull off the bottom and make a cupcake sandwich. Wouldn't recommend it with those, they do have fillings.
Cupcake sandwich?
Yes, a cupcake sandwich, so a cupcake burger, I guess, it's fun. So the Lorraine County Cupcake Crawl, we actually already launched it on social media. So I'll move into that. All right, so, excuse me. You are visiting eight participating bakeries in 31 days. We decided to do a month-long event just to see how it would do during that time. We also considered that a lot of people wouldn't be able to do it in a week because school, kids, and we did want kids and families to participate as well. Eight bakeries, both Kelsey Elizabeth Stores in Rocky River and Avon Lake, you'll have Blue Rooster Bakehouse in Overland, Kudrow's... like that?
We got it. I got it. Yeah, absolutely.
Love the logo with the two swords. Very creative.
Thanks. Thank you. Thanks. I will say, though, to add on to what you were saying, Restaurant Week gave us a little bit of a base. So this year, when I was able to approach the restaurants, they kind of said, oh, yes, we want in. We've been wanting to do that. So I think the buy-in from that point is a little bit bigger, too.
Well, how many times, who you tell me the hardest people in the world to work with? How many times you tell me this? Come on. What do you tell me?
Yes, yes, I have to say, I love the restaurant people, but it sometimes is a challenge. They wear so many hats.
They don't call me back.
They're busy.
Yeah, they're busy cooking.
They are. They're busy. They're busy. You know, they're running all aspects of the house. We know that. But sometimes you do have to do a little chasing, a little stalking. But that's okay. We got it. It worked.
Kevin, any charges pressing?
Not yet, but I think it's been a few close calls.
I'm actually going to introduce Amanda here to speak about the Cupcake Crawl. As you know, Amanda is the Marketing and Sales Coordinator, and Amanda has, this was Amanda's idea, I think, built out of passion for her own love of cupcakes. And she has done a really great job building this out, and I'm really proud to see how it's unfolded.
Thank you. Hi, Amanda.
Hi, Amanda.
Hi, good morning. I'm a little tall for this, I guess. So in the spirit of the Cupcake Crawl, we brought you cupcakes. So I'll bring those up to you first.
You're my favorite.
No, Ted.
Coffee refills.
No, Ted.
We'll be giving them insulin.
That's all right.
Jen, what's happening to your burgers?
Yeah, where's the burger sale?
How about I bring the winter burgers?
Okay.
Yeah, we'll take them.
We'll take them into it.
Yeah, we'll eat those a little later.
Thank you.
Yeah, remember to take those to the radio and TV stations, and they always want food.
Oh, we did. When we went to Q one oh four yesterday morning, we did take them cupcakes as well. So they were, they were thankful for that. They also taught us a neat new trick. You pull off the bottom and make a cupcake sandwich. Wouldn't recommend it with those. They do have fillings.
A cupcake sandwich?
Yes, a cupcake sandwich. So a cupcake burger, I guess. Fun. So the Lorraine County Cupcake Crawl, we actually already launched it on social media. So I'll move into that. All right, so, excuse me. You are visiting eight participating bakeries in thirty-one days. We decided to do a month-long event just to see how it would do during that time. We also considered that a lot of people wouldn't be able to do it in a week because school, kids, and we did want kids and families to participate as well. Eight bakeries, both Kelsey Elizabeth Stores in Rocky River and Avon Lake. You'll have Blue Rooster Bakehouse in Overland. Kudrowski's is also participating. They're doing a large cupcake, so that should be interesting. Little Devil Cupcakery, The Hive, Small Town Suites, and a Cupcake a Day in Medina. So we did reach out to neighboring communities as well to pull inward. There is a customized map, which you can see up on the screen, and I have copies for you as well. That is the passport, and the map that will take you where you need to go. Guests will have an opportunity to receive signatures from every bakery that they do go to. We've given them a freebie there. So six out of eight signatures, including that freebie, gets them T-shirts. And then if they complete the whole trail, which is eight out of eight, they do get a T-shirt, and then they also are entered into a grand prize drawing. And the grand prize drawing, we came up with an idea to do a dry ingredient jar, so that special flavor that they did just that month, they'll have that dry ingredient jar, and they can make it at home whenever they decide. Okay. So we did launch this last Monday. It took off. So far, Facebook, we made a, an event page, so that has been our major marketing point there. Social media, during my research, when I was doing this with a couple other counties, that was their, that was their biggest win, was just social media. And we also did a radio interview with Q one oh four yesterday. Facebook, I'll brag a little bit about that. It had at least fifteen thousand views that night. It reached over fifteen thousand people that night. And I woke up the following morning, and it had reached thirty-three thousand people. So that was impressive. Right now, it's at eighty-five thousand impressions, so it has reached that many people. Seventy-four hundred have clicked on the actual event page and have been reading about it on Facebook, and sixteen hundred have marked themselves interested or actually attending. So there has been that. And if you check down there at the Google Analytics, you'll see we've had a thousand recorded page views, and three hundred people have downloaded the map and passport. And we've also equipped all the bakeries with copies of the passport in case somebody comes in and they ask about it, and they want to do it as well. Posters, they have those displayed in their windows as well. And Instagram, we really wanted to get people involved online, social media. So there is a hashtag called Follow the Crumbs that we have already implemented, and we've had a couple interactions so far, which is fun. And we're definitely taking photo submissions. So that's how we will continue to track how well it does, and we do plan to boost the post and share with local media as well. Any questions?
No.
What a great idea. Wonderful.
Commissioners, once again, we have a lot of, we have, we have a million visitors to our beachfront each year at our park. We have, we have a limited amount of attractions in Lorraine County. We have to create opportunities, much like the Lorraine County Port Authorities, Lorraine City Port Authorities, pardon me, stunned down at the Black River Landing. We have to create opportunities for people to want to come here and stay here. And that's been our focus since we've started doing these events, and we're going to do more of them. We're going to call up some ideas for the winter. We now have enough brew pubs here, I think, and, you know, doing breweries and things like that, maybe in the wintertime. There's going to be some ideas, but we want to continue to try to keep people here and get them here.
I don't think the passport works for me. I was at Second Generations, Second Harvest Food Bank, generous helping. I was talking to people from The Hive and Kristin Namae from Little Devil Cupcakery, and they're really excited about this coming up. So it was nice to talk about when we were there. I already had two of their cupcakes and one of each.
I'm not surprised, and you're not supposed to be a cupcake commissioner.
Yeah, I know.
The, we won't go into that. You're not supposed to be...
Yeah, I know. That's what they have. I'm trying to support the economy.
Uh huh. Okay. And the healthcare industry. The, but we need the public, we need our public, Lorraine County residents, come out, make this big here, so we can get into the second and third annual, like I said, with Dining Week and Burger Battles, and so that we can have a second and third and bring people, you know, they can look forward to coming here to work with us.
Well, I like the touch of going outside of the county and the Cuyahoga, Medina, because that's going to get those people to come our way, if they're going to actually be part of the Cupcake Crawl. Again, the foodie thing, I think it's really going to move in. Cupcakes are popular right now, so.
Good. Great job.
Good job, Amanda. Should be a fun month. Firefish is next month. There's a lot of things happening in Lorraine County next month. Sorry to hold you guys up over cupcakes and burgers, but hey.
We made you hungry, though, I'm sure.
We can. Today's the decision on thirty-six point fifteen acres expedited to annexation petition from Eaton Township to the city of Alaria. Attorney Kenneth Fisher and Attorney Dennis Navar are the agents. I can go through this if you want, and you can. An expedited to annexation petition to MAFSR filed with commissioners received on August twenty-second for the proposed annexation approximately thirty-six point fifteen acres in Eaton Township to the city of Alaria for three eight two six five Chestnut Ridge Road, parcel eleven zero 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 nine two zero 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 seven oh, Chestnut Ridge Road, eleven zero 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 nine two zero 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 eight, and unincorporated portion of Chestnut Ridge Road, eleven zero 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 nine one nine hundred zero zero three. Petitioners are Route fifty-seven Chestnut Ridge LLC, Vic Cohen, managing member, and City of Alaria, Holly Brenda, mayor, and agent for said petitioners are Kenneth J. Fisher and Dennis Navar of Kenneth J. Fisher Company, LPA. August twenty-second, clerk sent the letter to the engineer and auditor to review and advise accuracy. August twenty-second, clerk emailed petition to Eaton Township as requested. August thirtieth, commissioners adopted Resolution seventeen five sixty-four, receiving and journalizing said petition and scheduled this day for the decision if all conditions are met. August thirty-first, Agent Fisher submitted affidavit confirming services on City of Alaria and Eaton Township and all adjacent property owners. September sixth, engineer issued a letter stating due to the irregular annex boundary wood segment Chestnut Ridge Road, a county road says to create a road maintenance problem. City of Alaria should agree to maintain the road as a condition of an annexation per O R C seven oh nine point oh two three D seven, and recommends City of Alaria maintain the road between the logistic termini extending from Dewhurst Road to Durkey Road. Legal description accurately describes perimeter of territory now petitioned for. Note that the caption in the petition should also reference parcel eleven zero 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 nine one nine hundred oh oh five, a portion of which is split in the legal description. The petitioner should provide a full-size map because the reduced drawing is ineligible, or is not legible. The territory does not exceed five hundred acres in area, and that its continuous boundary with City of Alaria exceeds five hundred, five percent. September sixth, clerk forwarded the letter to the Agent Fisher, Auditor Eaton of Alaria. September eighth, auditor certified a filing filed on petition and Resolution seventeen five sixty-four. September eighth, City of Alaria ordinances were received. Two thousand seventeen dash one one eight pursuant to O R C seven oh nine point oh two three E, providing that Alaria will maintain any segmented road caused by the annexation to the City of Alaria territory owned by Route fifty-seven Chestnut Ridge LLC and declare emergency. Two thousand seventeen one one nine pursuant to O R C seven oh nine point oh two three C, indicating what services City of Alaria provide upon annexation to territory owned by Route fifty-seven Chestnut Ridge LLC and declare emergency. Two thousand seventeen one twenty pursuant to O R C seven oh nine point oh two three C, requiring a buffer between the territory proposed for annexation and surrounding township land if Alaria determines that the used districts in the township are incompatible with those in the City of Alaria and declare emergency. September twelfth, received the large annexation maps, and Attorney Schrader received a copy of that large map. September thirteenth, Eaton Township filed the resolutions. Two thousand seventeen dash nine dash twelve dash one, opposition to proposed annexation of thirty-six point fifteen acres in Eaton Township to the city of Alaria opposes and respectfully urges commissioners to deny. Directs fiscal officer and township attorney to file with commissioners, copy the resolution. Objection based solely upon petitioners' failure to meet conditions specified in O R C seven oh nine point oh two three E. Commissioners must deny even if one of the seven conditions set for the O R C seven oh nine point oh two three E are not met by the petitioners. Petition fails to meet requirement of O R C seven oh nine point oh two three E one, not met requirement set for O R C seven oh nine point oh two one, and not filed in matter provided seven oh nine point oh two one, specifically seven oh nine point oh two one A.
Excuse me, are we legally required to read this all into the record? Can we just accept this into the record and waive the reading?
Well, I didn't realize that it was going to be five pages long. I thought there was just like a caption that you were going to read. I'm sorry.
We'll have to get a fill-in clerk here from the bullpen, I think, if you're going...
Have her.
Thank you. Next stop, you heard what's coming my head.
Can I, can I?
You don't even need a motion.
Don't need that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't real, I thought there was going to be a caption, not just that you would have to read the whole five pages.
This is not everything that was, I mean, this is outlines everything that was in the file. Small it all.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Dennis Navar. I am the agent for Route fifty-seven Chestnut Ridge LLC and the city of Alaria in regard to the petitioners for the expedited type-two petition. That's before the board this morning. As an initial matter, I'd just like to say that Ohio Revised Code Section seven zero nine point zero two three E, as an egg, provides seven requirements that if met, legally require approval of the request for annexation pursuant to correspondence dated September fourteenth, twenty seventeen, that was provided to Mr. Innis, copied upon Ms. Upton, specifically details how each of those requirements have been met in the instant case. And I don't necessarily want to bore you by going through all those at this point.
We know them.
But I would certainly request that that correspondence be made apart of the record separately. The township has, has adopted a resolution requesting that evidence be provided that the applicant, in this case Route fifty-seven Chestnut Ridge, had authority to execute the petition. And while we certainly disagree with the authority, with the ability of the township to request that information in an expedited type-two petition, an affidavit has been provided to Ms. Upton from the managing member of Route fifty-seven Chestnut Ridge LLC, the original I have with me. And if I can approach, I'll give that to Ms. Upton to, for the record.
This is the original? Okay. Thank you.
And certainly, we're aware that the Eaton Township has opposed this annexation, and we submit that the reasons stated are not legally before this board for consideration. Only those issues, those seven conditions identified in seven oh nine zero two three E. And I'm certainly available. And Mr. Bruning, Eric Bruning, is here from the Alaria Law Department, and we are available to answer any questions that this board may have.
Thank you. Mr. Innis, do you have any...
No, to the point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we just need to make a motion for approval, or do we...
Well, you can have some expertise. You have to say why this thing is ruled forty.
Do we even allow Eaton Township to respond?
You can, but you don't have to at this point. It's a decision-making process. So if it's met all seven criteria, and I know Jason's here, and I know Schrader's here and stuff, I mean, they came, so we could let them speak.
Mr. Schroder? Schrader?
Schrader. Hey, Al.
Listen up. I went to Germany, and they called me Schroder, which means I must have been mispronounced.
Maybe I have a speech impediment. I'm sorry.
You're aware this is a decision regarding this, and you got your letter yesterday and reread it again this morning, and I think we've all spoke with the county prosecutor, but go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm Attorney Al Schroder. I represent the Eaton Township Board of Trustees, and Jason Monchine of the board is here. I'm not going to go over every bit of that letter, but there are reasons to turn this one down. First, you have a precedent in a very similar situation earlier this year involving Eaton Township, in that case, the village of Grafton, where similar mistakes were made. The, just to outline them, the city is a party to this annexation and is a petitioner. As the Board of Commissioners knows, every local government, when signing a contract or a legal obligation binding the local government, generally names somebody to sign, given the authority to sign that. County Commissioners can authorize the administrator or any member of the board to sign it. Boards of trustees authorize trustees to sign it, and cities authorize somebody in the city to sign it. In this case, it was signed by the mayor. Unfortunately, there's no ordinance that relates to this particular annexation that gives the mayor the authority to sign it. They did pass an ordinance, and it was submitted by the Alaria City Law Department, but it referred to a different annexation. Now, the reason I want to talk a little bit about that is normally the objection is, well, gee, that's procedural. No, it isn't. It's jurisdictional. The fact of the matter is, authorizing somebody to sign a legally binding document, especially one like an annexation petition under the expedited method, where the city is waiving rights, like right to appeal and so on, that's surely not procedural. That's a jurisdictional issue. And so our concern is that we don't think the ordinance authorizing the mayor is effective because it authorized the mayor to sign the wrong petition. We also spent some time indicating the petition failed to follow what I believe to be the Commissioners' guidelines. I was later informed that those were actually the clerks' guidelines.
Correct.
But even so, those guidelines are pretty reasonable, and they ask for some reasonable information that was not given to you. The maps were not reasonable. We retained North Star Planning. Mark Medjuski is an expert to review them. He couldn't read the map. They did ultimately provide a larger map that's readable, but that wasn't until September eighth, and all these things have to be filed at the time you file the annexation petition. So we also have a concern with regard to, and these are issues that are under seven oh nine point oh two three E, both a lack of an ordinance allowing the mayor to sign this particular annexation, but also the issue on the road maintenance. Your county engineer was asked to review it. He did. He suggested there ought to be some specifics with regard to road maintenance. And I think the evidence is already clear that this does segment and subdivide a road in a way that will cause a road maintenance problem. That's an issue that initially has to be proved. We've done it by way of the townships. Wrote superintendent's affidavit that outlines the reasons that's important from a road maintenance standpoint, and why this does, in fact, segment a road and cause road maintenance problems. In addition, your own county engineer said this segments and causes road maintenance problems. What he had suggested, and what is deficient in this, is a city can pass an ordinance indicating, okay, we'll maintain the segmented road in order to avoid road maintenance problems. The problem with what the city of Alaria passed is it is terribly vague. Looking at it, I have no idea what part of Chestnut Ridge Road they claim they're going to maintain. Your engineer asked something very reasonable. Take it from Dewhurst to, and now I'm going to forget, Dewhurst to Durkey, so you maintain that portion of Chestnut Ridge between Dewhurst and Durkey. That way, we know who's maintaining it. That way, then when it snows in a couple of months, we're not going to be sitting around wondering who's going to plow that. And that was a very reasonable request, and their ordinance failed to meet it. So we're suggesting those are the reasons that you should turn this down. I know we had some discussion earlier on that prior annexation that you turned down because they didn't get these issues right, and you determined to go ahead and turn it down until they did get it right. So just briefly to summarize, and you're right, I am hungry listening to that cupcake and burger presentation. But to very quickly summarize that, the fact is that we have a need, and I've forgotten what the hell I was going to say, so I apologize, and this is going to be a lot shorter than I thought.
Burgers and cupcakes on the brain.
They do that. They do that to you.
Yeah, I get hungry, and I lose my memory. What I was about to say was that we need to turn this down, because under seven oh nine point oh three three, there are precious few things that petitioners are required to prove. When they don't prove one of them, you ought to turn it down. They may come back two or three different times, like they did with the Grafton one, but there's still a need to turn it down if they, when they don't meet the requirements as they have here. In this particular matter, and I'm going to let Jason Monchine, the trustee from Alaria, speak briefly, if that's okay with you. But, you know, the hope is to work out some kind of jet with the city of Alaria so we don't need to do these annexations. And with that, unless the Commissioners or anyone has a question, I'm going to let, and if it's okay with you, I'll let trustee Monchine speak.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for letting me speak, commissioners.
You're becoming a regular here, Jason.
I know. Boy, we're a hot topic when it comes to our land. It's been there since eighteen... It's been there since 1810, but everybody else wants a piece of it. So I enjoy going through these petitions when someone wants a piece of it and try and tear them apart myself. The attorneys had their say. I would like to bring up a few points. Yes, we do have a current JED with the city of Elyria. We have some items, businesses in those JED, in the JED, and I pitched a deal with Elyria that was even better than what they have now. I have not got a response from them. But it would kind of meet everything in this annexation, although we would keep our property because I don't see any benefit in services when fire would be coming from North Abbey Road, which is much farther as the crow flies than where maybe our department would be. And I don't know the whole situation with the city's police department, but again, safety services, you know, I think we can provide just as much or contract with the city. Anyway, let me get to my points on the petition and the things I had when I went through it. And I'll direct this to Jared if I could for a second. I know this was brought up in Attorney Fisher's response to you, but I had had it highlighted prior to seeing that someone else noticed it. The ordinance from the city of Elyria has 36.228 acres for this annexation, where the annexation itself elsewhere is listed at 31... A different number than 36.15 compared to the 36.22. I don't know where the extra or less land, what's missing from those. So while they argue that that's not an issue, again, the petition should be exact so we know exactly what land is missing or coming to them or from us. In the legal description, which is one of those seven parameters that have to be met, I see a legal description for the two parcels owned by Route 57 Chestnut Ridge LLC, but I do not see a legal description for the road right-of-way owned by the city of Elyria, which that's important for the fact that if we're talking about 5%, that has to be contiguous to the city. I don't have the length, then, of how long their property is compared to the property of the Chestnut Ridge LLC. And my point with that is, if I could approach real quick on this map, the Commissioners would see, the reason I would want that in the legal description is here is their large parcel they want to annex. It goes down to the neighboring property. The Exhibit A owned by the city of Elyria falls short. It is not the same length. So if we're basing that 5% on the actual roadway right-of-way up against what they own on Chestnut Ridge, it's actually a different number. So if anybody has seen that, I wanted to point that out. And again, the road maintenance problem, Mr. Schroder already addressed that. But in reading of the ordinance that I just heard, it sounded like they would take over any segment owned by Chestnut Ridge LLC, which, again, we could keep going on down Chestnut Ridge over and over then because that parcel ends in OO3. The next parcel, which is owned by the city of Elyria but not annexed in, is OO5. That then is in front of the small parcel they want to annex in the second parcel. Therefore, with that not being on the petition, that's another divided segment and down the line. When we talk about maintaining Chestnut Ridge, if the city was going to do that, the county puts up a snow fence every year between Bender and Durkey Road. Our fire department responds to multiple accidents because of the wide-open fields there. Is the city going to put up a snow fence for the county town president? I have one more big thing that I think ultimately throws it out, but I'll let you guys discuss that, and if it comes down to it, I'll bring up the last thing, which is part of one of the seven reasons. But I don't think I really need to do that based on the evidence we have so far, so. Again, thank you for letting me talk.
You probably say what you want to say now.
Yeah. Let's put it on the table.
Put it out there.
Let's put it on the table.
All right. Ultimately, the last one is it creates an island in the township. It creates a county island. By annexing this parcel, it surrounds two parcels. The Nash Farm, which is referred into the petition, it surrounds it by the city of Elyria, which creates an island. You cannot create an island anymore like Sheffield Township and Elyria Township has islands all over the place from annexation in the past. This specific annexation says you cannot create an island based on these parcels being annexed in, and it will be surrounded by the city of Elyria at that point if this was to happen. So that one alone, you have to throw this out. And thanks for letting me speak.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jason.
Jerry, that last one really particularly got my attention. Is that correct, that it's going to create an island in that area?
I can show you the map.
Peter, do you know, are you familiar with this project enough to talk about that issue?
I'm not aware of the degree of knowledge.
Did you have a comment on the island specifically?
Well, I cannot comment on the island. There's no evidence that's been submitted from the county engineer that this will create an island. And in fact, the county engineer has opined that the legal description accurately describes the perimeter of the territory now for petition for annexation just in response to those issues. And Mr. Bruning would like to speak quickly on the city ordinances that were passed in this matter.
I would just like to say that the engineer's reference back to you guys per the Ohio Attorney General is just to be used as a guide for the Commissioners. It is not the ultimate say-so. So for the fact that they didn't catch an island, that's not his fault. It's just something I'm here to point out.
Can you look at, could you show us on this map?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we have to see the island, Jason, because I don't see it in the outlining properties.
Why don't you take the map down to the table so that, you know, all sides can see if there's an island there running up.
Commissioner, will you take a look where the island is?
This way, both sides of the...
Yeah, look at it, right.
This is our city of Elyria. Correct. I'm just showing you here that it is the city of Elyria already here. If these two parcels are in, that's around these two parcels would remain unincorporated property in the town of Anhov.
I don't think it's, I think there are just... Because there's too many side conversations going on.
Yeah. Wait, guys, guys, this is a public hearing. You need to go back out there.
Yeah, we can't talk.
Okay, no ex parte communications here, okay?
There's too many sides going on, and I...
All right. Now, Ms. Kokoski?
Yeah, the map is on the screen.
It's looking like there's these two, these two small parcels right here. I don't know if you can see that.
It's on the screen.
Those two will be the island, is what Mr. Monchine is referring to. Correct?
Correct. Those will be surrounded.
These will be surrounded by Elyria or Chestnut.
Correct. The north side of the road, which is where Elyria would be annexing from, is already the city. If you annex these south parcels around the Nash Farm, which these two parcels are, it then is totally surrounded by the city of Elyria, which therefore makes it an island.
So you're talking about the road as being the part that makes it the island around the annexation request?
Well, the property to the north is already in the city, so therefore, when it comes to safety services or whatever other reason, I didn't make the Ohio statute, they said no more islands, and yes. So at that point, there's a total circle around it, and therefore, it's an island surrounded by the city.
That's a stretch for an island, Jason. No offense. I mean, because there is a roadway there. It's not an island where it is.
Right, but they're annexing in part of a roadway now. I don't, you know, no disrespect, but, you know, I don't find it a stretch. You know, I look right at it, and I say, hey, if the city layers are in the north and to the east, or I'm sorry, the west, and they're coming in from the east and south, that then circles the whole perimeter of that parcel, those two parcels.
Commissioner Lundt, in regard to when this legislation was done, you were there when the Township Association pushed these expedited to you.
You're going to ask me if that's an island?
Yeah, I mean, what was...
I think that's a matter of counsel.
I think that's a legal...
Okay, I don't know if there's ever a discussion about that.
Yeah. Well, I can tell you, you definitely want to avoid islands. You do not want islands. I shouldn't say avoid. You do not want islands.
Does the roadway consider making it an island, since it isn't inaccessible?
That I don't...
Counsel is indicating that, you know, he hasn't been able to determine from the maps, and it needs to be determined from the engineer whether it creates an island or not. Okay, now, let him speak for himself. That's what we're talking about over here. So the engineer looked over the maps. They have to make a determination of certain things. There's an engineer's rep here, correct?
Pete, now that you've seen what he's referring to, do you have a, you need to come up, though. You need to come up to the microphone.
I tried to hide back there, Peter, but...
Peter Swick from the county engineer's office. I have to correct you, Mr. Administrator. I have not reviewed that map.
Okay, I just said it was a representative from the engineer's office. I didn't say you reviewed the map.
Okay, yeah, yeah. And I'll repeat, I'm not aware that there is an island created. I'd have to investigate it.
You'd have to look at it further.
An eligible map would be a big help.
So this is not going to help you to determine whether there's an island or not? You can't determine by looking at that map if it's an island?
Not at the moment.
Okay.
Did you, do you have anything to say about Mr. Monchine's, what he was talking about with the...
Road maintenance?
Well, yeah, not the road maintenance, but he was talking about the description including everything.
Actually, I did review the legal description, and as I reported, it is accurate. It also includes a parcel that was not mentioned, the parcel that ends in dash 005. They're actually splitting it off, which is a long, narrow strip owned by the city of Elyria, owned, but in Eaton Township, I believe. So what was that question you asked me?
I'm trying to figure out, do we have an accurate, is, and that's, this is something that I've been confused about for three weeks, and quite frankly, I asked the petitioners to clean it up, and because I was confused, I'm still not clear as to whether or not the legal description actually conforms with what the petition is asking to be annexed. I know the ordinance is off, and I'll address that, but does the description match up with the petition? I still don't know the answer to that question.
Well, the answer to that is that, in all respects, except that portion of that parcel that ends in dash 005 is not captioned in the petition.
Okay, but does the meets and bounds legal description and the map that they presented, do those accurately depict what they're seeking to annex?
I can't comment upon the map because this is the first time I've seen it, the first time I've seen a legal copy. But as I stated, I'll repeat again, the...
Could you tell from the smaller one that was...
No, I could not. But I could tell from the legal description that it is accurate.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Sorry to pull you into that.
Yeah, I just have concerns that we have some issues that could prevent us to make a good decision on this. I think we need, do we have time to get these couple of things cleared up before we move forward?
Well, you're supposed to do it within 45 days of the petition being submitted if there is an ordinance resolution impacted to it. So today's the 36th day.
And you have how many?
You have 45 days.
So we have another week.
Yeah, not less than 30, not more than 45. So today's the 36th day.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I also have reservations. I think that some, need to do some cleanup. You know, the details are important here, and rather than everything lead to future litigation because there's unanswered questions here and trying to get clarification on a number of these points. I'll also say personally, when I was with the city of Elyria, one of the things that used to frustrate me and sometimes infuriate me is how people have a tendency to drive down the road in the wintertime, pull the blade up on the plow, and then put the blade back down later because they're going from one jurisdiction to another. Never made sense to me. Everybody should be working together on that, you know, so I understand, you know, the importance of that. I also am a big proponent of JEDs. I don't know what kind of discussions took place, if any, around that.
I offered them all the income tax, 100%. They could have it all. Just let us keep our land, but I never heard back from the city. I think that's pretty reasonable. It's the same thing as this petition, so.
But I would agree with you, Madam Chair. I think there's still unanswered questions here. I would not be comfortable with approving this today, and it's important to take the time and do it right.
I would make just one comment, although there is a problem with the acreage in the ordinance. Statute reads really funny. What it says is the city is not considered an owner, and you don't need the authorized signature of the, you don't need the signature of the city unless an authorized agent of the political subdivision signs the petition. So, Al, you're kind of in a catch-22. If you maintain that the signature's not authorized, then the city isn't required to sign it. So I don't, I mean, I've been disturbed about this petition. I have shared those concerns, but that, that I do not believe is a legal problem.
That was like the least of my concerns. Mine was the road maintenance, the island issue, and why not do a JED? That's a whole nother issue right there. That's not part of our discussion.
The JED is not part of our decision process.
I know. I'm just saying, but the road maintenance and maybe with the road maintenance.
I remain confused here as to whether or not we have an appropriate legal description.
And if I may, the county engineer has provided that an accurate legal description was submitted. There's absolutely no evidence before this board that there's going to be an island completely surrounded here. The township had every opportunity to raise that issue in Resolution 2017-9-12-1, and they failed to do so. And it's our position that all seven requirements, as required by law, have been met. And it's a requirement that this petition be approved. Certainly...
Did Jerry contact you guys to tell you that he had some concerns about the legal description?
We've addressed every issue that Mr. Innis has brought to our attention in that September 14th correspondence. And certainly, Mr. Bruning would like to discuss, you know, the ordinances here specifically related to the maintenance.
And I don't want to take up too much more of your time on this. I just, I do want to clarify with this for the record because these are, you know, ordinances that I helped draft, and it's my legislation. I'm a little bit, a little bit put out, but I understand that things can be misinterpreted, and I want to make it very clear that that initial ordinance was referred prior to the legal description by the surveyor that they hired having been completed. If you look at the wording in that ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign this, it says approximately 36.228 acres because that is the legal description of that actual parcel that they were bringing in. The legal description changed when they started bringing in part of the road and things along those lines. I will tell you, and I don't know, I mean, you guys are a legislative body. My counsel doesn't look at the legal description for accuracy or anything like that. They want to know what parcel are they bringing in. We told them that. We put approximately 36.228 acres. And it also says, if you look at the next line, when finalized, to be approved as de forma and substance by the Elyria City Law Director, which is our department. We look at these. We vet them before they go. Counsel gives us that discretion, and that has always been a part of our ordinance drafting. Anytime we include an exhibit that is for exemplary purposes only, so just to make that clear. As far as the road maintenance is concerned, again, we crafted this legislation before we had the report from the county engineer. We did it, and I looked at the statute. What does the statute require? That is how the ordinance got put together. The statute requires that we, the city, maintain any part of a road segmented by annexation, by ordinance, we are requiring ourselves to do that. The statute even, it doesn't even... The statute even, it doesn't even say that it has to be by ordinance that we agree to maintain it. It just says the city agrees as a condition of annexation to maintain any part of a segmented road. That's a minimum. That's not saying we're not open to doing more and in fact, our city engineer is here and he's had some discussions with Bob Kleiber and, and the county engineering department as to expand that a little bit more. And we fully intend to do that. But for the purposes of this, we had to get something to you guys within a certain time period. That's what we had to do. So is it perfect? Probably not. Does it meet the statutory requirements? I submit to you that absolutely it does. So as to those aspects, those are the city aspects that I wanted to address. The road maintenance and the authorizing ordinance, I think it's very clear that those are addressed. I don't really have anything to do with the island portion of this discussion, but I, I would also submit to you that we're looking at statutory language here and the language in the statute says the annexation will not create an unincorporated area of the township that is completely surrounded by the territory proposed for annexation. Okay, I think that's a key phrase at the end of that. By the territory proposed for annexation means that the whole piece that we're trying to bring in would surround an unincorporated piece of the township. If there's an island here, which I'm not saying there is, I don't think there is at all, but it's not completely surrounded by this piece that is being brought in. It would be caused by other factors as well. Why would the legislature have put in that extra phrase, by the territory proposed for annexation, if they meant anything else? Why not just say there can't be an island, period? So I'm just, again, that has nothing to do with the city.
That's a stretch. That's a stretch. Okay, that's, that, that's a stretch.
I was gonna say, I read many case studies.
Good for you, all right?
I think this case law I had success with too.
But, but I like it. Wish you on our side, but, but it's a stretch. Even Al's back there giggling over that one.
Anyways, to me, the primary issues that I needed to address were the city legislation pieces and I think I have done that and if you have any further questions. And Jerry and I have discussed this and I, I thought, Jerry, we were, we were comfortable and maybe there's something else, but I, I don't want to speak for you, obviously.
I don't disagree with you about the ordinance at all and I thought I tried to explain that. That's not an issue. My, my issue remains, I just am confused as to whether or not our description is correct and I'm still confused about that.
Yeah, and again, I would just say that statute says it has to be an accurate legal description and the parcel numbers, as we've discussed too, they're not part of the petition. So any flaws in those would be procedural defense.
I would agree with that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Innes, I certainly understand you're, you're confused about the legal description, but I would submit again that the county engineer has provided testimony today, including his previous written report, that the legal description is accurate.
Well, and I want you to explain whether I'm confused or not, doesn't matter. The commissioners are saying they're confused and they're turning to me and asking me, can I unconfuse them and I'm telling you, I can't. It's up to them to be clear about what the description is.
We can wait a week and get these couple of issues cleared up. So you're comfortable, so you can tell us that, so we can be comfortable and then this new issue about the island, I'd like to verify that that's not an issue also.
And again, just what they're saying, again, you know. You know, it's, it's not a legal issue at this point. Clearly, they have to submit an accurate description. I'm just, we have a factual question of whether or not the description they have submitted matches the petition. If, you know, if you're satisfied that it does, then fine.
And I do still have the concern about the road maintenance. I know you said you've spoken to the engineer's office, but I would like something from the engineer to make sure. You mentioned about a, a snow fence.
There's a snow fence the county's put up since I was a kid. I've lived on Chestnut Ridge. I know all about this area and it needs paved. Is the city gonna, you know, they were just discussing paving Dewhurst going west, but when are you gonna pave Chestnut to Derkey? Because I'll be the leader of the township residents saying this darned road needs paved if you're in charge of maintenance of it, or we could all work together and everybody could be happy. And same when we go on down the line on where the sewers are gonna come from, this and that. But again, just to touch on Mr. Navar's point, again, the engineers, this information to use, used as a guide. It's not the end all say all. And for him to say that he just said it was accurate, I just stood behind him and he said he wasn't sure and couldn't give you an answer. So I say, you have to deny it today, not just hold it off, deny this whole thing, because there's work that needs to be done in this petition, if it, which I would hope when it come back and the fact that we could all just work together.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that we postpone it for a week. I'm not gonna deny it today, because these few issues may be able to be resolved in a week's time, I think. Mr. Cordes, did you have something?
No, I was asking counsel. I think we just need to ask a direct question and, and then look at the island issue. It does or it doesn't. I, I respect, I was teasing a little bit to the Illyria lawyer, but I respect, you know, his interpretation. We just need to get it from our counsel, because he's not our counsel, and from our counsel, what that interpretation is, so that you have clarification of that. The, the, that's been an issue before and then you can, you can, I think that can all be accomplished in a few days.
That's what I'm thinking. We could just.
You know, counsel advised us early on that he, there was some confusion in this process. We did talk about that. I will say, Jason, you may postpone this, but even if they deny it, they're gonna clean it up and come back.
Right, and I'll keep going through it and be in the biggest pain in their behind. You know, that's just how it's gonna be. Grafton eventually was gonna get it because they own the property. It was simple and easy. They just had to dot their i's and cross the t's.
I'm not against you, Jason. You know, we've, we've worked.
I understand, but I would hope that we could just, you know, the city and township, we already got things in the JED. I pitched a better deal. I don't know where, you know, it's a bus to nowhere. They can get on the bus in the city as far as I'm concerned, but where are those sewers coming from? And if they come through the township, I'm, again, gonna be a leader on why we're getting into, township presidents are gonna have to tap into this when it's now in the city of Illyria.
Well, you also have the county commissioners involved, but also Jason.
And I, I, I respect that, because I knew that was gonna be an issue at the county level as well, so.
And, and, and you know, we offered to, to work with Illyria on your side and accept the sewer, bring it over there. So I, and we worked beyond Tiff language with our attorneys to be prepared for development. I, we met with the developers too. I mean, so, but you're, you're jousting at a big windmill, but I appreciate what you're doing.
Again, eighteen-ten is when that township was founded and I'm supposed to be one of the three people in charge of it, so we're not in favor of losing land anyway.
You do still receive the property tax under this annexation, correct?
Under this annexation, which they could throw in my face, but again, it's about principle and why, why take our land?
Not arguing that.
And again, hey, we'll handle it with our own safety services and the sheriff and why have the Illyria police and Illyria fire come out there when, when this could be easily handled, so.
Well, I think we're, yeah, we're gonna postpone this till next week. You could call, contact our, our legal counsel if you have any questions, but we, I think we know where, where we are or where we, where we need to get to.
You have to come up to the mic.
Jerry want? Yeah, I guess so. Short and sweet, please.
Sometimes it's not particularly easy to practice law. One of the problems isn't just the legal description, but the, the requirement is also that you provide a map and the problem is the map just ain't readable.
Right.
My expert couldn't read it. The county engineer's office couldn't read it. I didn't want to raise the issue of the island, because frankly, we had to identify it by coming up with our own map, which is not part of your record, which was an aerial, that we could finally figure out there was a, a problem here. So I understand you want to wait and I respect that. I'm not sure we're gonna get a resolution, because we don't have an accurate map that you can read or that makes sense. I don't know how a city, as a condition of annexation, expresses that, other than by their ordinance or their resolution. They passed an ordinance. It doesn't ring the bell. So for what it's worth, I would respectfully suggest it might be better to turn it down and I, I.
We'll cross that bridge next week. If we don't get the answers that we need, then, then we will, but if, up until then, we're gonna give everybody a chance to resolve the, the couple of issues that are keeping us from passing it today.
No offense, Al. We've been through this, the same thing. And Jason does a great job. You do a very good job representing the township, but in the end, we just end up, you know, feel like a hamster on that little wheel going around in the cage and then he just gets and it happens again and, you know, some couple of technicalities. Again, Eric said approximately. Again, I wish you could enter a JED. I'm a big fan of JEDs. We try and work all the communities that way. But we just keep going around and then he says approximately. We know how all the legalese works and I'm not an attorney. Thank God we have Jerry. But I mean, there's a practicality to the identity issue that it's going to happen. So there's a couple of issues here we'd like to have addressed for our own clarification. So we make a decision based on what Ohio provides code says we have to do. There's not an opinion in here. We're not allowed to have an opinion. It says meet seven, you automatically vote yes, whether you hate it, like it, pro, con, neutral. So we've gotta get to that portion, that we have everything there. If it's all in there and our legal counsel tells it, it meets all the criteria. If our legal counsel tells us, it doesn't meet all the criteria. Decisions are made based on a lot of the times that our legal counsel gets us.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you for talking.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it.
Take a motion to continue this decision until next week.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
All right. I don't even know what I do with my agenda.
Investments.
You want mine?
She buried it.
I really don't.
I can say second without mine.
You want just to prove the whole agenda?
Consent agenda?
Yes.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Oh, I love that.
I mean, seriously, the clerk lost the agenda.
Well, you had a motion before you, Madam Clerk.
I know, but I'm waiting for the second. Are you serious?
So we're doing a lot of, because I serve on everyone.
It was a legal motion.
It was a legal motion, but.
Do you want a second, Mr. Lundey?
Sure, second that.
You want a second consent agenda? That means we'll be done.
That must be a public hearing.
So you called comment. We won't read out the agenda. I was just, Al was drawing my motion.
Unless there's, yeah.
Oh my goodness, I thought we were getting progressive.
All right.
That'd give you a story, huh?
Yeah.
Commission super consent agenda and leave.
He was ready to give me the agenda, weren't you?
I, I was just at the Avon Lake School Board meeting and they, that's the way they conducted their agenda.
Yeah, they can. We can, whatever. All right, investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Propriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Advance?
There are none.
There are none, okay. Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under the commissioners authorized various special actions as indicated on summary sheet for employees within interest exploring county commissioners?
So, Mr. Cordes, if we would've done a consent agenda, would we still have been able to go into executive session?
I would've requested under my reports.
Okay.
You're linking that idea.
Hey.
Well, well, since, since you brought that up, I was gonna speak to it under my reports. The reason we don't do a consent agenda, because it's, it's, the paperwork is here and the resolutions, everything's just as transparent. It just moves the meeting more quickly when we have a full agenda like we do sometimes. It makes it very hard for the clerk to index the various issues and to retrieve them in case the public wants access to those public records. She does a really great job with her indexing. I can ask her to find things from twenty-five years ago and she can do it rather quickly, but, but you do a consent agenda.
It ain't happening.
Right, and the indexing of the records becomes, becomes difficult and then trying to drill down and find, you know, one specific item that was in that consent agenda is, you know, is the old proverbial needle in a haystack. So we break.
Just interrupt your CCO and we do consent agenda, it's just on the financials. That's the part, the bill paying.
You can probably do, the, the first part of your agenda there probably should be by consent agenda.
One through seven and it's all done as a consent agenda.
And we should talk about that, because very few people, that, that is already on a recap schedule to begin with. So we don't do the individual payments, but I just wanted to just note on that, since you brought it up about that, with the executive session. This makes it easier for Madam Clerk to respond to public requests for information, go back in, in the books and find your resolutions and to provide a better service out there than, than a consent agenda would. Not that it would shield us from the public seeing the business, because it all will be on the agenda anyway. With that, I, I do have a couple hires with regard to the transportation center and our IT department. I have a completed labor contract with the operating engineers that I want to finish discussing and, and vote on when we come out today and the, uh, potential sale of real estate that have been, and purchase of real estate that we've been working on. All three of those, well, and as we'll say, an update on the ongoing labor issue with Department Job and Family Services. All, all those are, excuse me, all of those issues are allowable for discussion of the Sunshine Act and ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting. We go into executive session, we discuss those matters that I've explained. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve away the reading under the minutes of September nineteenth and twentieth?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Approve the various change orders for the historic courthouse renovation project. Change order number one to Sona for the plumbing is fifteen thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty cents. Change order number one to R M Riggle, the fire pump is fifty thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty cents. Change order number one to South Shore Electric, the fire pump is fourteen thousand six hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-five cents. Change order number one to S P P Mechanical is nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Change order two to Moser Construction is actually a credit of four thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and change order three to Moser's twenty-three thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Want to talk a little bit?
Sure.
I always want to talk about change orders. I don't like them.
Especially some as hefty as these.
I do too.
I don't like them. You know, you know how I am about change orders and, and, and contingency funds, where we're brutal on those ends when it comes to projects. We originally had scoped this job without the fire booster pumps. When it was decided to build out, and I don't want to even say build out, we actually built the third floor in the courthouse, we were advised early on that if we didn't do it during the renovations, the potential to do so at some future date was, was almost completely eliminated due to having to put in new trust and, and wall supports, because there are certain portions of that courthouse was not built to have a, a third floor. Decision was made that time to burden that expense now, so that the, the ability for expansion ten, fifteen years down the road was there. If you hadn't, they wouldn't have had that expansion capability. I think it was an excellent decision, much like the courthouse with the extra space in the courthouse that they'll have twenty. Excuse me, Justice Center, they'll have ten or fifteen years, twenty years from now. That required, because that was an extensive change to the building, that required the building to be sprinkled under the new fire codes. We did serves, we did a study and a survey with the water pressure in and around the city. It was determined that where there was enough water pressure, not to require fire booster pumps at the time, so we did do our due diligence. We did our engineering and we got a certification for everything we did in the building. However, that was in the fall, late fall, early winter and then when we were informed just recently, when they came back and they were doing pressure checks, oh, well, we have different pressure requirements in the, because our pressure's different in the fall and in the spring. And they re, they came in again and they said, well, we don't have enough pressure in the spring. You need booster pumps after everything was approved. So I don't know what to tell you, Commissioners. We, I have all the reports. I have all the permits. I have all the, the go-aheads and, and I presented the project to you without the pumps. The good thing is that I, I did have them lay out the sprinkler system early on, so they could add the booster pumps at some future date rather easily. I thought that future date was way in the future. It's a, it's, it's a smart thing to do. You never know what's gonna happen, especially in a downtown city area. You get a lot of development. There's a lot of vacant buildings. It puts a real demand on, sometimes on the water pressure. It may have been a need down the road. I didn't, again, I did not think down the road was gonna mean before we even get in the building. But now we're required by the fire marshal to put these fire pumps in. So that's where the change came from. I'm not happy or excited about it. And the other piece with the, with the, with the water lines and the water mains, you, you understood that. The, you know, Illyria wanted us to go a different way, because in order to facilitate the fire pumps, we need a bigger water main and they don't want us to cut Middle Avenue, because they just repaved it. In order to put the bigger water main in, we have to cut the road and, and put a bigger pipe. So we actually told them that they want that done. They, since, you know, part of, we felt part of the problem was what they certified, they needed to work with us on that cost. They came back and said, well, they just couldn't do that. And so I'm, I'm, we're working out a solution. Right now, it appears we, we've, we have come up with a solution that won't cost us a lot of additional money and we probably will not have to cut Middle Avenue and we'll move our water source over to Third Street, which hasn't been repaved yet. I really don't want to cut into a new paved road, uh, excuse me, Second Street.
I was gonna say.
Sorry.
Third Street was really nice coming to have a second.
Second Street. I, I got a lot going on in my mind. Commissioner apologize. Second Street, which hasn't been paved yet. I really don't want to cut into a new paved road, excuse me, Second Street.
I see. Yes, yes.
Third Street was really nice coming to have us sitting here.
Second Street. I, I got a lot going on in my mind, Commissioner apologizes. Second Street, which hasn't been paved yet, and I'm, so Davis and I have been working through that. I really don't want to cut through a new street and crosswalk and so forth to put in a water main. But that's, that's your update. Sorry.
You've got to be in compliance with the law and safety standards and whether you're public or private sector, you're susceptible to this.
Well, we were.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, originally.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under the airport, extend agricultural lease with DeShant Nolte Farms effective February 27, 2018 through February 28, 2019, a total of two hundred and one dollars and fifty cents per acre.
No, Commissioner Kallo, we're not growing.
I was going there right through the second discussion.
Yeah, I knew you were going. No, we're not.
Go ahead.
So moved.
Second. Well, at least the corn's going to help pay for the airport at 200 bucks an acre.
We, we make about a hundred and twenty thousand, give or take a bit, pays for a lot of that. The airport tends to be a bit of a lightning rod issue for folks out there when, when budgets get tight and money gets tight. And they look on, on the, the wallet, you know, the...
Checkbook.
A checkbook, excuse me. And there's about between five and 600,000 that works through the airport. They, they don't understand originations of fund, sources of funds and expenditures. I'm going to tell you again, outside of a little bit of sometimes special grant money that we can match that the board provides, there has been $50,000 of general fund money to keep that operation afloat. We privatized a lot of the work out there. We do get fees, tie-down fees, fuel fees. We, we do make some money out there. We get a lot of farming fees and federal grant monies. We have a minimum of 150,000 usually a year. Some years we bank it for a bigger project and we carry it over, and then one year the budget was like 900,000. What they didn't realize, we carried over for three years, our 150 maintenance, cobbled it together and then got additional, nice source of money from the FAs. We had a big budget that year. They don't look at that. They go, look at 900,000 for that, where's those airport?
Outside money.
Well, a lot of it was carried over, you know, the federal maintenance dollars because we had a big runway project.
It's not general fund money.
But it's not general fund money, and, and I really wish people would just call and we have a conversation about that. Right now, local dollars from the Commissioners is about $50,000, and you have put in 10,000 here, 12,000 there. Whenever the FA has a few extra dollars and they call us up and say, we've got some extra grant money.
It's usually 90-10.
95.
95, 95-5.
Five. It's usually, you see, 95-5 or 90-10. You're right, some of it's 90-10, but they've come along with some 95-5 money. And so we're bringing that federal money back. And, and you've, you've offered that assistance. This doesn't happen every year, but there has been some occasions where we've come to you and said, you know, we just need a, we need 10,000 to get, you know, 150,000, thereabouts. I don't know the math work, but I'm just giving a generalization. So please, don't think that all that money out there is coming from the general fund. It just simply is not accurate.
That's the problem with that online checkbook, it doesn't give the depth or anything, it's just a snapshot of what's happening.
And Commissioner, you know, most of it's from agricultural. Ag and federal maintenance dollars. And we're growing corn everywhere but on the roof of the buildings out there. And the FA doesn't like that because corn and airplanes don't go together. Why?
Animals.
Animals.
Birds.
Birds.
They, they definitely don't want us farming the land, but they can't prevent us. I told them if, I know it's, I know that's, that those things don't fit in harmony, but we need money.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Approve change order number one in Mount Natchee, exceed 4,600, 2PS Construction Fabrics, Inc., for additional crack ceiling to complete the filling. The worst cracks beyond original contract amount of 5,600 pounds on runway 725.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Community Development, award contract to GenMet Construction LLC, Lorraine, in the amount of 56,100, which includes contingencies for any unforeseen change orders for Kenneth and Louise Ganzelbeck at 42779 Haven Drive, Alaria Township. For home repair to be paid from the chip program year 16 account in Erie County Health Department.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorized purchase service agreement with CND LLC, Lorraine, in the amount of 172,358 dollars to provide personal development training classes to TANF and Bayet recipients in fiscal year 18, effective October 1st, 2017, through September 30th, 2018, and authorized director to act cam behalf of the fore of prosecutors to prove us to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Amendment Resolution 16459, adopted August 24th, 2016, authorizing purchase service agreement with U.S. Securities Associates, Inc., Independence for Security Services for fiscal year 17. Amendment is to reflect end date of agreement will be November 30th, 2017, rather than September 30th, and increased by 10,000 for a total contract amount of 66,108 dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Solid Waste Amendment, Amendment Resolution 1744, adopted January 18th, 2017, approving a district market development grant to Graft and Midview Library in the amount of 549 and 89 cents for the recycled plastic table and rubber mulch for the community reading program. Amendment is to reflect correct account number.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I just, if I could, at this point, I was going to mention this in my report, but I just want to thank my colleagues, our Solid Waste Department. Had a chance to attend the ribbon cutting for their reading garden, of which this grant is attached to. It was also put together by Jason Bruhl, who's an Eagle Scout who worked in conjunction with the Graft and Midview Library. And it's just an example of how government can partner with community efforts and community projects to make things better. So now, right directly behind the library, there's a really cool area where if you want to sit down and read, that will be available to you. But I just want to let this board know and let our Solid Waste Department leadership know that the community, that community members who came out, the Eagle Scout, Jason, and, and all the folks affiliated with the library were very appreciative and very thankful for the county, working with them to make this reading, reading area possible.
So you left your wife on a bird day?
I did. Yeah, I had to get a hall pass, but...
You wouldn't want a bird day, would you?
It was.
But she's a happy camper.
Yeah, we're, I got a hall pass, that's all I'm saying. Honey moon's over, right?
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Authorized First Amendment to subsidize, create an agreement for TCAP with Department of Rehab and Correction Amendment to rebut the F5 of Enders Language, which was amended.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Health District, approve an interim agreement with Bayalaski, Cleveland, to perform architectural and engineering services necessary in the fix and paint for basic services in the amount of 7,629 plus 45,000 for furniture design and specification and 38,000 for reimbursable expenses for the Lorraine County Health District facility in Murray Ridge. Special services.
So moved.
Second.
Any conversations?
Are we doing the funding for that? Are we doing...
The, well, you may, you know, there's various options as we go into this. We've talked a little bit about the collaboration with the Health Department. Clearly, the building's obsolete that they're in. It's, it's undersized with the consolidation of, of the three Health Departments, which was long needed in Lorraine County and has finally occurred last year. You cannot take an organization that was housed in three different buildings and consolidate them into one building where they were already too tightly packed. I think the board there made a, made a, made a good choice to stay in that location rather than try to move and everybody competing and feeling slighted if they didn't go someplace, so they're going to stay in the current location. It's on county land that we already own. We're working on sites out there. We know how to build and maintain buildings, they know how to take care of people, it's a good partnership. So they have a really fine individual working on their team from their organization, I'm very impressed with the, the young fellow and working with Ms. Davis. We've, we've gotten it to this point now, it's time to select the architect with all the team, the engineering firm, and, and move forward. We'll know more about the cost. I believe the cost is going to be between eight and 10 million dollars. That'll include building a new building, demo in the old building, parking lots, et cetera. And we're looking at some unique ideas out there to enhance the area. On Murray Ridge, the, the Health Department will be using quite a bit of cash that they've, they've accumulated towards this project. They, they've been thinking of this project for some years, so it's, it's not something that, oh, we consolidated, now it's built. They needed to build anyway, so they've been very frugal with their resources and, and they've planned for this for some time. They've done a good job. So we're, we're working on this collaboratively. The remaining balance, if we do need to do some financing, they'll commit what their, it's not really inside millage they have, but it's an allocation from the cities, that's guaranteed to them from the cities inside millage. They often refer to it as inside millage, but it's not quite that, but it's, it's very well-guarded funds that, that's guaranteed to, the paid at debt service on anything that we need to issue for them so that this building can get done. It'll depend on how close we get and what the costs are, and we may carry construction notes for a while and they may want to liquidate that debt more quickly, so we may not go to permanent financing. So still things to be determined. I'm pretty excited about the collaborations, what, what, those type of collaborations make me real happy, that, that we can do these things together and, and share our, our abilities and our expertise so that we save costs and get things done. So I'll keep in the loop. We don't really have a lot ourselves, conceptually. I'm sure they'll show you what their ideas are, but, but it's their building. And we're going to make sure it gets put up correctly, stays within conformity of all the code requirements, et cetera, et cetera. Unless they, they build something wild and crazy that, you know, looks kind of weird like, you know...
Visitor's Bureau?
I didn't say that. You know, but if it gets a little too far out there, I'll alert you so that, you know, but I'm, I, they're fairly conservative people and they got some really good ideas about how to build a building that should convey the sense of health and well-being and the services they provide in the community. I like working with them. Dave's done a great job out there.
Wonderful.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Cortez? It's your turn.
I yield the counsel. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Mr. Renus?
I just have one matter of pending litigation to update the Commissioners on.
Commissioners' report.
I don't have much to report. I just wanted to give kudos to everybody that was involved in the Valor Home project, the mural project. We were all out there that day and it's, it's great what they've done. Mr. Secretar is a wonderful artist, him and, I can't remember the other guy's name that was with him, but they just do great work. They, I think it's October 11th, they're going to do the final phase of the Amherst project, the murals that they have downtown Amherst on Park Avenue, so if you have a chance to get out there to help them celebrate that, it'd be great. End of my report. Yeah, it's been a long day.
Been a busy week, too.
It's been a busy week.
Congratulations, Echoing Hills. They run facilities for disabled people across the state, and it's actually started in Amherst, Ohio. Got an opportunity to meet Mr. Brown, Cordell Brown, who grew up in Amherst, and he's taken it all over the state, just a wonderful organization, 50 years of taking note, care of those in need. Community Action Agency had a great fundraiser also after that. I was talking earlier about Second Harvest. They had their generous helping fundraiser and the great turnout, the food was wonderful, not just the cupcakes, had great food. Your favorite place, Jailhouse Tavern, had some great mac and cheese.
Oh, yeah.
But it was a great, everybody smashed, the Fav with their burgers, everybody just did a great job there, and it was a great turnout, supported a very important cause. Getting the Valor Home mural, it's a nice honor. Rosa G. asked me to read the letter from Senator Sherrod Brown, who couldn't be there. And then also today, welcome Councilwoman Jody Moon from the City of Lorraine to our audience. Good morning, Jody. How you doing?
Good morning.
End of my report.
Go back to the beach after this.
No, wow, okay.
[inaudible].
There you go. Yes, so, welcome to the meeting. Also, I guess, I just wanted to touch on before the report, you know, we have been trying to provide information regarding this current issue with UAW 2192, and I guess, since this is a recorded broadcast, I just wanted to make sure the public was aware of an open letter that we had sent to the community. And, just to give you kind of an executive summary, you know, we've stated in this letter to the community that we respect and admire the work of the County Job and Family Services workers. They have a tough job to do, they do it very well. We also respect the collective bargaining process, we've worked within the guidelines with the goal of reaching an agreement. There is one issue, one issue unresolved, spousal car, coverage. If an employee's spouse has insurance available with their employer, the spouse would be on their employer's plan. County employees and their children stay on the county plan. If the spouse doesn't have access to employer insurance or makes 25,000 dollars or less, the spouse stays on the county plan. And we have offered several proposals to address those spouses who have access to other coverage but desire to stay on the county plan, all of which have been rejected. We are working to protect all county employees from higher copays and higher deductibles while maintaining quality health coverage. Eleven other bargaining units have agreed to this spousal coverage language. During negotiations, both parties agreed to an independent fact finder to work through the issues. The fact finder's report described county healthcare benefits as, quote, "top of the line" and, quote, "employee cost among the lowest in the state and nationally." Similar to 2014, when UAW 2192 also went out on strike, we hope to continue to negotiate the one remaining issue and get our employees back to work, and that was a letter that was sent out to the community, an open letter from the members of this board. Other activity this week, just wanted to say congratulations, North Ridgeville Chamber of Commerce, they had a very informative luncheon, Dave Johnson, who is their PR Director for the Huntington Convention Center in downtown Cleveland, very interesting gentleman, just talking about all the things that they're doing and, and how Cleveland is literally on the map, just not nationally, but internationally.